...regular meeting with the budget hearing, and so I would like to call the meeting to order, and please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In attendance this evening, we have myself, Kristin Smith, and Nancy Davis. Amador is not able to be with us, and my there is Scott. And we're going to go right into the budget hearing, so I'm going to hand it over to Caleb, our business official.
Now Lisa, help me out here. Am I supposed to read this before I do the? Okay. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District will hold a budget hearing at the Junior/Senior High School Gymnasium, 600 Route 55, Eldred, New York, in said district on Thursday, May 5th, 2022, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, for the purpose of discussion of the expenditure of funds and the budgeting thereof imposed by the Board of Education for the school year July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. Notice is given pursuant to Section 1716 of the Education Law that a copy of the statement of the amount of money which may be required for the following year for school purposes, exclusive of public money and the real property tax exemption report, will be annexed to any budget of which it forms a part of and may be obtained by any resident in the district at the district office, 600 State Route 55, Eldred, New York, and at each of the three following school buildings in the district, the Eldred Junior/Senior High School, New York, the Elementary School, and the Sunshine Free Hall Library. During the 14 days immediately preceding the annual budget vote and election between the hours of 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM prevailing time, other than a Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday, together with the text of any resolution to be presented to the voters, and will be available on the district website. A copy of the detailed statement of estimated expenditures will also be made available at the budget hearing to be held May 5th, 2022. And for anybody who's curious, this is the budget statement. It's usually easier to get online, but there is a copy over there, and if anybody needs a copy made, we can have one made for you. So I'm just going to give a quick overview of the budget and what's in it. The state prescribed the way we present it today to some extent, and it does allow for the community to ask questions, answers for the budget. So this year, as far as revenues go, we're trying to keep school taxes down. We know it's hard out there right now. Inflation is up everywhere. It's not just gas, it's virtually everything. So the school board is sympathetic to that, and while we, of course, have needs because our expenses are going up, we did try to keep it to a minimum of 0.9%. We understand the need to balance what we need for revenue and what the community can pay. As far as state aid goes, we get the minimum 3% increase for foundation aid. According to the foundation aid formula, we are actually getting far more than what we would normally get. Because they won't ever lower it below the base, we get our minimum 3%. We will probably always get the minimum. We get about $3,800,000. According to the formula, we should get $2,600,000. So we're never going to get more than that minimum amount. However, we did end up getting $108,000 more in pre-camp. That kind of helped bridge that gap. Unfortunately, essentially, that means that we're going to get the same amount of money state aid as we got last year, thereabouts. We're considered very land wealthy. What the state does to decide what we can kick in and what they'll kick in on our behalf is they take the value of all of the property in your district and they divide it by the number of students in your school. So Eldred has $1,400,000 in property, taxable property, per student. To give an example, we have the exact, almost the exact same amount of taxable property that Fallsburg has, and they have tripled the students. So Fallsburg has $400,000 per student to our 1.4 million. So when they say that you're wealthy, they say land wealthy. That doesn't necessarily mean they're saying all of the residents are wealthy and they can afford to pay it, but that's how the state calculates it. The state goes in and they say, "The average tax rate is X amount in New York. Your property values are this much per student, so we think you can tax this much, and that's what we're going to put in for aid." So I don't expect us to get a great deal more aid in the future. Grants, you might ask, we get a whole bunch of money for COVID recently, a ton of it. And you might ask where that money is. That doesn't get accounted for in the A Fund. It's not something that the school has to, that the public has to vote on, but I can tell you that those funds are accounted for separately. Next year, what we're using that money for is the expanded summer school program, the tutoring that happens after school. We have teachers who stay after and tutor to help make up learning loss here. We're going to be starting a college program. Now, these programs are going to continue after the grant funds are gone, but they are currently what we're using them for. And in time, some of our newer students should be able to graduate with associate degrees. So that's what that COVID money is going to be used for. The state requires us to report to you in a three-part budget. So it shows an administrative, a program, and a capital component. The administrative component, you'll see, is down. That is not exactly down. So what's going to end up happening is we paid for one of the new administrators out of the COVID grant funds. We got $2 million, a little over $2 million. One of them is on one of the COVID grant funds. So this looks like it's gone down. In the future, really, it's right about level. Hasn't gone down, hasn't gone up. We haven't added anything on the administrative side, so it's all inflationary. Program-wise, you also see some of that money coming down. Again, that was because of the COVID grants. So here on the capital side, you're going to see, actually, those two are switched. That was an error there. The program side actually went up. The program side mostly went up because of benefits. Health insurance is up 7%. Workers' comp is up substantially. TRS contributions are up, and just virtually every employee benefit that exists is up. We have not hired anybody new or anything like that beyond what we've done last year. But that's the major increase in costs are due to employee benefits. Health insurance, 7% increase. That makes up most of this. What is included in administration? That's the Board of Education, that's the superintendent's office, the business office, all legal costs, insurance, the principals. There's a BOSIS admin and capital charge. That's actually $230,000 of the $2 million BOSIS charges you to be part of BOSIS. And then the curriculum and development side. What's changing this year is the costs are considerably lower because, as I said, one of the curriculum and development section is being paid out of one of the aforementioned COVID grants. Otherwise, nothing has actually changed. Inflationary-wise, if that had not come out of the COVID grant, administration would have went up by about $40,000, $2 million, so it would have been a small amount. So it would have been 1%, 2% increase on that, had we not had that grant. Program expenses, this is the meat and potatoes of your school district. This is everything that is regular and special education faculty. It's your add-a-district placements, it's your vocational school, teacher's aides, textbook software, psychology, guidance, athletic programs, and the cost of transporting your students to any of those programs. So that is the bulk of it. So this year, what you have for the program, if you go back, that's of the $18,987 that you spend, $14 million of that is program. That's most of your expenditures. What are we adding? Most of the programs that we're going to add this year are going to get paid through the grants, as I mentioned before. Some of our major new initiatives for this coming year are the college program, the expanded summer learning, and on the professional development side, we're going to be part of Tri-State. Right now, we're ex officio members, but we're looking to become full-fledged members. That's a professional development program. It's best described as group of critical friends. So they're going to be visiting, and I believe Scott Krebs has already done a visit, Tracy will be doing a visit. They'll be visiting other schools, critiquing their programs to learn what works, what doesn't work, and then other schools will be coming to us, and they're going to critique our program, and they're going to say, "You could do this better, this is great," and they're going to take ideas from us and give us ideas. And the whole idea of it is that all of these schools with successful programs learn from each other and provide better student outcomes. So that's actually a major initiative that we have going on, and that's actually something Dr. Morgano got us into. Capital expenses, what's in capital expenses? It's not just buildings, but it is, it isn't, it isn't. It's not equipment, but it's also all the cleaners, the maintenance, the repairs, and it also includes our debt payments. So that's what's in your capital expenditures. They're going down a little bit this year because there's no major additions planned for this year. We have been exploring a bond project, which I'm sure you've heard us talk about. That's not going to affect next year's budget at all. None of the money is really coming out of that. That will all get rolled into the bonds, so like the surveys and the architects and all of that. Their pre-referendum fees is what they call it, so before a bond gets passed, aren't paid out of pocket. One of which we've negotiated that we wouldn't pay anything if it doesn't end up going into a bond. So I don't expect any material costs involving that project to hit 2022, 23. On the referendum, you're going to see a transportation lease. So what we're doing this, why are we leasing buses? Well, our current lease expires at the end of the year. So as of June 30th, I don't own any buses. I can't transport children. So if we don't lose the buses, we can, we have two options. We, the NICE Ed will give us an emergency lease for one year, which will undoubtedly be more expensive than a regular lease, or we can go out for one year and contract it with one of the contractors who will, of course, have us over a barrel because we'll have two months to get them on there, so I can't imagine what the cost of that would be. So I don't think it would be good for the school. I'm not allowed to say, vote yes or no, but what I can tell you is that if we have to go out and find a contract in two months, it's not going to be cheap.
There's also a labor management issue with that. We can't unilaterally do that.
That is true. And further, in 2027, the governor has mandated that we go to zero emissions vehicles, which we are not currently ready to do. There's a bunch of infrastructure that has to go there. My understanding is obviously the main one is electric, but the other type of zero emission, my understanding, is hydrogen, I think, neither of which we have the capability of filling buses with at the moment. So you have to install some infrastructure for that. If we have an electric bus, I need to have charging stations that can handle all of that. And if they are hydrogen buses, which I'm told exist, I'm going to need a tank to hold that as well. We don't have either of those things at the moment, so it's not something you could do on the fly. As far as what this lease costs compared to our prior lease, the one that's coming due, right now, we pay $266,000 a year. The new lease, I would expect to be around $270,000 a year. What we did was, the old lease had 14 large buses and two small buses. We found that that was, you know, with our current enrollment, is not quite as necessary. So now what we're going to do is we're going to have 12 instead of 14 long buses, and we're going to have three mini buses up from the two. That makes it, so these new buses are almost exactly the same price as the last ones. You'll see that the proposition says $1,500,000. Now, the reason for that is I need to be conservative in that number. What happens is, the buses themselves are state contract, so we're getting them through Thompson Buses, they're the ones who own the state contract for New York. But the financing has to go out to bid. So if the public approves the lease, I go out to bid. I don't know exactly what the final number is going to be. $270 is the estimate because interest rates are about, well, actually, a little lower than they were five years ago, and the overall cost of the bus is the same, so it should come out to around $270. But if it comes out a little higher and I have it approved for a lower amount, I have to go back out for another vote to ask for the additional money. And just to give a comparison to last time, I think we put $1,450 on the proposed budget, but that $266 comes out to $1,330. So it's not, that's typical to put in there. It's a cap, it's not what's actually planning to be spent. Why not purchase new buses? Well, because we don't own a single bus, so there would be a large upfront capital cost, and you'd have to hold them for about eight years to get a return on that money. So the lease is set up like it's a seven-year loan. So I'd have to buy the buses, my seven years of payments would be the same as seven years of lease payments. Then I'd own the buses, so then you'd start breaking even in the eight years. Your first seven years, you're going to be paying a car loan that's the same amount as your car lease, but then I own the buses. So on the eighth year, I might break even, as long as the buses don't break down or something doesn't happen to the buses. But the other issue, and Dr. Morgano actually brought this up the first time, is he said, "Well, all of the sudden, zero emissions vehicles are what's required. These buses aren't going to be worth anything because everybody's going to be trying to buy them, you won't be able to get rid of them anywhere." So that is another reason that the lease seems like a good idea at this time. Why not go zero emissions now? Well, I just covered that before. There's a large investment in infrastructure required for that because there's, I do believe there's one charging station in Eldred at the moment. So if I need to charge up a fleet of buses, I'm going to have to pay a fair amount to have charging stations put in. And then you have to upgrade your electricity, which is something a lot of people don't think about because you can't just throw it on there. The breaker isn't made for the amount of electricity that's going to be flowing into multiple buses. So there is a bit of an increase there, and Governor Hochul has said that they're going to give out grants to put in that infrastructure. So when it does come time, and we do have to go to zero emissions vehicles, I would like the state to pay for it, if I can. And at the moment, a lot of those grants aren't available yet. So that is what I had on the budget. The public is free to ask questions, the board's free to ask questions. There's a copy of the budget over there, if you want a line-by-line, something a little more detailed. And if you need a copy of the budget statement, ask and we'll get it for you.
Thank you.
To lease buses, anything that needs to be repaired, is that our ownership?
No.
We are responsible for that, or that's something that the leasing company takes care of?
With the leasing, it includes a bumper-to-bumper warranty. They repair everything. We do basic repairs and maintenance, like minor.
Oil changes.
Tires, oil changes. If there's something like a screw or something like that, we'll typically do it, but no, any major repair is done by them. And they also do a service every year during the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
We have the AOK Award.
We also have an AOK Award that we would like to present tonight as well, so I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
Good evening, everybody. I know, Logan, you've been waiting immensely with great patience. So we have Logan Wilcox here, who's one of our kindergartners in my building at George Ross Mackenzie Elementary School. I'm very surprised he doesn't have any superhero garb on today, but he looks sharp. Logan is a drop-off every morning, and every morning, Logan gets out and says, "Hello, and how are you doing?" to every single person and every single kid. And our administrative assistant in the building, who comes in right around that same time when she starts her day, recognized it and saw it, and it's just wonderful. She put Logan in for the AOK Award, the act of kindness, and we couldn't be happier to have one of our kindergartners be doing that every single day. So if Logan, if you could come up and join me, please, I'd love to give you your award, all right? And with Logan with this, you get a free ice cream cone at the corner. All right? Good smile here.
Good job, Logan.
Good job, Logan.
Good job.
All right. Can you give us a second?
Logan, look who signed your ice cream card.
Thank you. Logan, thank you.
You're welcome, I'm there. Thank you for being as great as you can.
Great job, Logan. Thank you so much.
Now, I know most people like to go after that, so we give you the opportunity to take off.
I have another little one to grab, so I'll take it.
Yeah, and he's got to get his bed rest.
Yes.
Take care.
He was so patient.
Thank you for coming.
Dr. Morgano, thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good night.
Night. Okay. So that brings us right into any district reports that we have. Do we have a superintendent report?
Yeah. We have no principal reports tonight or director reports. I want to first and foremost acknowledge Miranda Martel is going to be receiving tenure this evening. And Miranda, you've done a fantastic job, and we've all seen you grow from a young kid to a professional, and it's a pleasure to have you here, and you'll be here for many years to come. On May 18th, at 3:45 in the afternoon, we're going to have a ceremony. We're going to plant a tree in honor of Coach Gonzalez and Josh Glantz. So it'll be two trees, and there'll be a rock with plaque on each with a saying for each member of our organization who have passed. Everyone is welcome to attend, and it will probably happen rain or shine. Scott Halick is donating the trees, and we appreciate his generosity. As far as the budget goes, it took us five years to get where we are. We have to keep moving forward. A defeated budget would complicate our plans for the future significantly, and I know that this community supports education. And we crafted a budget of a tax increase of less than 1%. It could have been up to 2.6, and we still would have been under the cap, but we have to balance what the community can afford with what we need. And sometimes that balance finds itself, sometimes it's more difficult, but at 0.9, we feel we can continue to manage our programs. I think that's all I have this evening. I have enjoyed being here. I'll be here for one more board meeting, and this is a great school district, and it was worth saving. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morgano. And we did the budget presentation. Do you have anything else to add, Caleb?
No.
Okay. And I don't have anything from the board president, so we will hop right into public comment on the consent agenda items only. If there's any public comment on the consent agenda items, now would be the time to address those. So we will go into, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items 61 through 903. I need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
So a motion by Nancy, a second by Kristin, and any discussion by the board of the consent agenda items?
No.
Okay. And so we will take a vote to approve these consent items. Nancy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Any old business to come before the board? Okay. And then we have new business. We have a couple of things for new business that we'd like to go over. Caleb, did you want to address the walk-on resolutions?
Yeah. Okay. So the first one is a resolution to modify the position of Dr. Morgano's employment contract July 2nd, 2019 through July 1st, 2024. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is authorizing the modifications in the employment contract July 2nd, 2019 through July 1st, 2023 for Dr. John C. Morgano. Be it further resolved, upon separation from employment, the monies due the superintendent under this provision of the superintendent's employment contract shall be paid into his IRC 403B tax sheltered annuity account as a non-elective employer contribution without a cash option in an amount not to exceed $61,000 within 15 days following his separation from employment. Any remaining monies due based upon the benefit provided in this contractual provision shall be paid as additional compensation during the first pay period of 2022-23 school year. Be it further resolved, upon separation from employment, the monies due the superintendent under this provision of superintendent's employment contract shall be paid into his IRC 403B tax sheltered annuity account as a non-elective employer contribution without cash option to the extent that the payment to be made into said tax sheltered annuity account pursuant to the provisions of Section 5A of the superintendent's employment contract is less than $61,000, provided, however, that any amount of money due the superintendent under this provision of the superintendent's employment contract that would cause the amount to be paid into his said tax sheltered annuity account to exceed $61,000. Then such monies in excess of $61,000 shall be paid to him as additional compensation and not paid into said account. Any monies to be paid into his tax sheltered annuity account pursuant to this provision shall be paid within 15 days following superintendent's separation from employment. Any additional compensation due the superintendent based upon the benefit provided in this contractual provision shall be paid as additional compensation during the first pay period of the 2022-23 school year.
You can tell an attorney wrote it.
Yeah, you can. I'm more surprised I got through it without stuttering.
I get paid out for vacation and sick time when I leave, and rather than taking it in cash, I'd rather put it into a tax sheltered annuity. It saves the district about $5,000, and it saves me money. So it just seemed like a logical thing to do.
Yeah, that was just a very long-winded way of saying it'll go into a 403B account instead of in the check.
All right. We need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Nancy makes the motion.
I'll second.
Nancy, or Kristin seconds. Any discussion amongst the board for this resolution? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so all three yeses.
And both second walk-on resolution is a resolution for the motion for the Board of Education to approve the annual audit for the school year ended June 30th, 2021, as prepared by Cooper Areas LLP and the related corrective action plan.
And I need a motion to approve this resolution as well.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kristin, second by Nancy. Any discussion for the board? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Also in new business is the rules of order and qualification of voters. So we will review the meeting rules of order. During the public comment portion of this meeting, each speaker should identify him or herself and state their town of residence. Speakers need to be acknowledged prior to speaking. Questions must pertain to the propositions, one question at a time per person, and the president or vice president of the board reserves the right to close discussions. Voting will take place in person on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, at the Eldred Junior/Senior High School in Eldred, New York. Closing the vote is at 9:00 PM. Qualifications for voting must be a citizen of the United States, must be 18 years of age or over, and must be a resident of the school district for 30 days or more preceding the date of the vote. The custodian and inspectors of the vote will oversee the voting, and the custodian and inspectors will verify all hand-counted results of the voting. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the qualified voters of the Eldred Central School District, a school district of the state of New York located in the counties of Orange and Sullivan, will be held at the Eldred Central Junior/Senior High School in the Eldred Central School District on May 5th, 2022, at 6:00 PM prevailing time for the presentation of the proposed budget for the following school year. The budget will be available for review no later than May 4th, 2022, and thereafter at both school buildings and the school district office. Notice is further given that the annual meeting of the qualified voters of the school district will be held at the Eldred Junior/Senior High School, Eldred, New York, on May 17th, 2022, at 9:00 PM. The adoption of the following proposition. Proposition number one, school budget that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to expend $18,987,402 during the 2022-2023 school year. The adoption of the following proposition. Proposition number two, for the Sunshine Hall Free Library, that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to levy taxes annually in the amount of $31,600 and to pay over such monies to the Board of Trustees of the Sunshine Hall Free Library. The adoption of the following proposition. Proposition number three, the bus lease, that the Board of Education is hereby authorized to enter into a lease agreement to acquire 12 66-passenger school buses and three 20-passenger school buses equipped with wheelchair access. The term of the lease shall be five years at a total cost not to exceed $1,500,000, which shall be raised by a tax upon the taxable property in the school district to be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts determined by the Board of Education. And proposition D, election of Board of Education member. And Proposition D, election of Board of Education member, the qualified voters of the Eldred Central School District, are authorized to elect one candidate as a member of the Board of Education to serve a five-year term beginning July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2027. Voters may select one candidate or submit a name on the line for a write-in on the ballot. At this time, we will do a business official question and answer. So any questions pertaining to the propositions that we were just discussing would be addressed at this time with our business official. Seeing none, that brings us to our second public comment.
Can I just make one public comment before June does? Just with Miranda gaining tenure tonight, I just want to let everybody know Miranda's an Eldred graduate, all right? She's homegrown, she's an Eldred graduate, she started out in pre-K, and now her first year in third grade, also my first year here in the district in the building. And if you remember Miranda, those conversations we had over the summer during summer school and how nervous you were, well, you've done an outstanding job in third grade, and I want to make sure you know that, all right? And that's why you're being granted tenure tonight, all right? So congratulations again.
Is she announcing River's retirement?
Just over here? Here's okay?
June, you want to clip on, Mike?
Yes, then I can talk to my hands.
Yeah, give her that one.
Thank you.
It's your mom. Feed the beast. Oh, she's a rip.
River's very excited.
Yeah, she's so excited.
It's so emotional, so I really asked my old husband to have her. Good evening. A couple of months ago, I woke up and found her in the front door of the entire neighborhood of school. I felt that it was the right time. I didn't realize that was emotional, but we needed to consider it. River doesn't know why she's here this evening, but I feel an obligation to publicly announce her retirement since our community supported her in building school and lost her marriage. In July of 2014, I adopted and began training River. In March of 2015, she was introduced to each class. By September of 2015, River joined our kindergarten's whole time. Our current sixth graders were little children I had grown up to. I was always invisible. A dozen children saw River and greeted her while I was not at college. I asked my classmates to sit down, but they requested and had all of them hear, but when I said, "Shh," it was time to take them back, and the silence heard me. River had children excited about a family helping her find missing homes, hardware jobs, and local businesses, which awarded generous gifts for each of them. If River made suggestions of the nine-hour walk challenge, which paid $100 dollars for me there, I would have been an ambulance, and was lying in the entire building. Whatever River suggested or requested ended up becoming one of the opportunities to be kind, considerate, and silent. River was also instrumental in helping children overcome problems in their reading, helping them to help their parents, and helping children overcome their fear of loss. It was so fun. Before I showed the video, I'd like to share a story. Jenny Keaton was our principal, and it was at a time when we were aware of a faculty that recorded and come in to our district, like she did in other districts, to report on things that were happening in our school. So I had a tip-off, and then one day out of the room, Mrs. Keaton appeared in front of this lady, and oh, well, this is the reporter. So I had a split second, said, wow, she came in to do a marketing job, and thought, oh, the better teacher disappointment. She could teach the main rules of my work in the school. It's picture-perfect, how awesome. And then Jenny announced that, don't wait, before, wanted her to be short-stopped by my room, introduced Lisa to River. So the whole thing was pulled out of her and grabbed her purse. Here's the video with you, and I told them the opportunity to rely on this, and I told them everything, and they encouraged that, but it was just one thing I learned from that.
I'm a boss. Major. Missy. That was a theory. Where does the time go?
Come on.
One of those is sound.
Close that one. Oh, God. She used to go see my mom in snow.
Thank you, June, for sharing River with us. The sun foot.
June, do you want to read these? Do you want to read these?
It's time, sure.
Is that okay if she reads those from the kids?
Sure.
I save all of the little letters I get from children over the years. I have them from the 80s. She was. So Ms. Kansas' class did a writing assignment with the children in October of 2015, and here were just a couple that I grabbed today. Dear River, our class read a story called Helping Paws. This story made me think of you. At school, when I am sad, you make me feel better. When you are at school, you make me happy. You are my super dog, River. Love, Jillian. Our class read Helping Paws. This story made me think of you. At school, you make me comfortable. I feel happy when you let me pet you. You are a terrific dog. Love, Madison. This letter starts out the same way. It says, you are nice and can help people. You make me smile and feel happy. River, you are a great dog. Love, Rory.
And she's coming for a pet.
Do you have anything to say?
I remember the day I tried to walk her. She walked me for a while and then didn't do anything. I didn't have the magic touch. I brought her in the woods and everything.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Oh, River.
Well, thank you for sharing River with us over the years. The kids got a lot out of her.
It was a wonderful experience. I'm glad that our school set the pace, because other schools outside of this district reached out to us and asked what the secret was to doing this. So our little school in the country, really, it's the administration that allowed this to happen now, that made it possible for our kids.
She shuts a show off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, River.
Any other public comment to come before the board?
There's one thing I forgot to mention. I sent out a letter today to the community for a principal interview committee. As you know, Tracy's going to be moving into the superintendent's position, and we have to replace her, and that's going to be a hard job. So there'll be a committee of parents, teachers, students, administrators, community members, and they will identify the top candidates and send that list to the Board of Education, who will interview the candidates that the committee identified, and from that group will pick a person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, our next meeting will be held here on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, from 11:00 AM through 9:00 PM for the budget vote and school board election and certification of the election will be counted. All ballots will be counted, and the results will be read at that time. And at this point, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen, second by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.